Good afternoon, everyone. I call this meeting and Standing Committee Finance and Economic Affairs to order. We're meeting today, or this afternoon, to resume public hearings on Bill 85, an act to implement budget measures and to amend various statutes. Please wait until I recognize you before starting to speak. As always, all comments should go through the chair. Those comments are meant for the committee members. The clerk of the committee has distributed documents, including written submissions via SharePoint. As a reminder, to each presenter, we'll have seven minutes for the presentation, and after we hear from all three, in this case, all two, we have one virtual. So when we've heard presentations from all three presenters, the remaining 39 minutes of the time slot will be for questions from the members of the committee. This time for questions will be divided, two rounds of seven and a half minutes for the government members, two rounds of seven and a half minutes for the official opposition members, and two rounds of four and a half minutes for the independent members as a group. So with that, we have, the first panel consists of Alzheimer's Society of Ontario, Nina Deeb, and Earth Education League Ontario Chapter, and I believe Earth Education League is virtual. Okay. So with that, I just want to add in the instructions, as you start your seven and a half minutes, at six minutes, I will say one minute. You can keep going for that one minute, don't stop, because it isn't a minute and a half. So with that, we start with the Alzheimer's Society of Ontario, and we ask each one, before you make your presentation, to state your name for answered and your position, and then the floor is now yours.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Hardiman and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kyle Fristold. I'm the Director of Public Policy and Government Relations with the Alzheimer's Society of Ontario. Our feedback on the 2023 provincial budget will be divided around two themes: keeping Ontarians living with dementia out of hospital today, and preparing for a future treatment that will lower demand for hospital in decades to come. The Alzheimer's Society is a federation of 26 frontline healthcare providers operating in every community across Ontario. Last year, we supported just under 100,000 clients, including both Ontarians living with dementia and their care partners. There are over 275,000 people living with dementia in Ontario today. In addition, there are over 150,000 informal unpaid family caregivers supporting them, who are often older adults with health concerns of their own. Both of these numbers, the number of people living with dementia and the number of caregivers, will triple in Ontario within the next 30 years. By 2050, unpaid caregiving for Ontarians living with dementia will equal 322,000 full-time jobs, making dementia the largest employer in the province. We are not prepared for this drastic increase in dementia prevalence. Already today, home and community supports are insufficiently resourced, and people living with dementia have nowhere to turn other than hospitals and long-term care homes. A full 50% of ALC beds in Ontario's hospitals are occupied by people living with dementia. That's around 3,000 hospital beds filled in Ontario on any given day, or about 9% of our total hospital capacity, occupied by someone living with dementia who does not want or need to be there. Our hospitals today exist, to a large extent, to house people living with dementia who are not being supported at home. This is not a sustainable situation. At the peak of the COVID-19 pandemic, Ontario was able to temporarily add around 3,100 critical and intensive care hospital beds. If this status quo remains unchallenged, we will need to add double that number permanently, solely for people living with dementia who have nowhere else to go. There is no realistic chance of this happening. We must either do more to keep Ontarians with dementia living at home, or accept that the standard of care we expect for our parents and grandparents today will not be there for us in decades to come. Budget 2023 reiterated an investment made last year of an additional $5 million per year for community dementia programs. This is a prudent investment, and can be put to immediate use, keeping Ontarians living with dementia out of hospital beds. Unfortunately, to our knowledge, none of this funding has actually been spent from either 2022, 23, or the current fiscal year. Promises made in the budget will make no difference to Ontarians living with dementia if they are not kept. The Alzheimer's Society First Link program would be able to support an additional 6,980 clients per year with an investment of $3.26 million. Funding, again, that has already been approved but has not been spent. This fund would enable us to avoid 405 hospital visits per year, equivalent to over 6,800 hospital days, saving taxpayers nearly $5 million per year in avoided hospital costs. This investment is ready to happen. The Legislative Assembly approved it in last year's budget, and we are pleased to see the Assembly recommit to it in this year's budget. We urge the government to make good on this promise, and the Alzheimer's Society is a willing and able partner to immediately get to work keeping Ontarians living with dementia out of hospital. One potentially game-changing development in our shared mission of keeping Ontarians with dementia out of hospital and at home is the imminent arrival of a disease-modifying therapy, a treatment. There are currently three drugs approved for patients living with dementia in Ontario, all of which treat the disease's underlying symptoms. Canada does not currently have a treatment for Alzheimer's disease itself, only its symptoms. That will soon change. Earlier this year, the U.S. FDA approved a treatment for emergency use against Alzheimer's disease, the second such treatment that has been approved for use in the United States. We expect this treatment will be submitted for approval soon in Canada, and has already been submitted to regulators in the European Union and Japan. This treatment and future breakthroughs that will follow have the potential to revolutionize dementia care in Ontario. Research out of the University of Southern California last year, sponsored by the Alzheimer's Society, found that Ontario could save nearly $10 billion in avoided long-term care and hospital costs with the efficient, timely introduction of a treatment for Alzheimer's disease. We are not ready for that treatment. The same research study found that wait times to receive a diagnosis of Alzheimer's disease in Ontario would skyrocket to seven and a half years if a treatment was introduced and approved. That is longer than many people will live following a diagnosis of Alzheimer's disease. Budget 2023 includes new funding and resources to reduce wait times for surgeries and procedures, but does not speak to addressing wait times for a diagnosis of Alzheimer's disease, nor does the budget prepare for future capacity constraints and lengthy wait times that will arise if and when a treatment for Alzheimer's disease is available in Ontario, which is likely to happen within the next two years, or within the current mandate of this Legislative Assembly. As one example, to monitor safety and efficacy, in the United States, all recipients of this newly approved treatment require four MRI scans within a one-year period. Assuming that requirement is also opposed by Health Canada, and that there is roughly equal demand for this treatment in Canada as we've seen in the United States, Ontario would need to provide an additional 16,000 MRI scans per year, a number that would increase with each passing year. Scan capacity is just one impending bottleneck in diagnosing Alzheimer's disease. Ontario has about half the number of geriatricians we need, and there are tens of thousands of Ontarians, older adults, rather, who don't have a family doctor in Ontario. Family doctors are often the first point in someone's dementia journey, and serve as a first point of contact for a diagnosis of Alzheimer's disease. We are running out of time to prepare for a crisis in diagnosing and treating Alzheimer's disease. The hope and relief that would be felt when Canada's first-ever treatment is approved will quickly turn to despair and anger as thousands of Ontarians realize that they will miss out on a life-changing treatment because their government wasn't ready. We implore the province to focus some of the wait time commitments made in Budget 2023 on initiatives such as MRI in specialist capacity that would help prepare for the imminent arrival of a disease-modifying therapy for Alzheimer's disease. I thank the committee for your time today, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We now go to Nina Deeb.
My name is Nina Deeb. I am a real estate broker in this province since, I'm a full-time Realtor since 1996. My career preexists most of the regulators in this province, and there have been more and more regulators since I've become a Realtor. These are private entities. My recommendations on this budget, I actually did speak at pre-budget consultation, and I had some recommendations, mostly on housing. One of the things I have noticed here is the Ontario Place sale, so the government action as the agent representing the people of Ontario in a real estate transaction of public lands. Contract law in Ontario, represented parties in a real estate transaction include an acknowledgement section that stipulates that the parties to the contract have received a copy of their contract and are aware of their commitments from their representative. I request a written copy of this lease. The Ontario Science Centre, status quo, that does not need to be changed, that should remain as it is. Highways, I would like to remove the Highway 413 in Bradford from the budget. We should not be building these highways. This is not the time for highway building. The Highway 407 is underused and overpriced. It already exists, and we should be using it. This is the immediate and best solution to our traffic congestion. We should be using the already-built 407. Transit, I'm very happy with the tunneling and the born machines. I do support this transit growth. More of this form of transit is encouraged. The most appropriate location for transit planning in large cities is underground. Building, the budget plans to build new highways, new roads, schools, hospitals, long-term care homes, and transit. What's missing is housing. We should be building housing as our number-one priority. It shouldn't come behind all these other provincial projects. Revenue, not-for-profits. There's approximately 59,000 not-for-profits in this province. While the province plans to grow revenues by approximately 5% per year, there are billions of dollars escaping taxation. Very wealthy private corporations are qualifying as not-for-profits. Some of these entities are grossing in the range of $1 million per employee. These corporations that are not paying taxes have been awarded fines without hearings. I spoke out on this. I sat in this very chair, and I spoke out against fines without hearings for private entities. This has been passed, and this exists in our economy now. One of these private entities has bought and sold $25.63 million in Toronto, worth of real estate, in the last year. These corporations are very wealthy, and they should be paying taxes. They have stood alongside true not-for-profits and claimed to be not-for-profit, too. They're very wealthy. They actually have more money than the government. As far as Ontario Health Premium, the economic outlook to increase by approximately 5% per year. I am an employer in this province. This makes Ontario a more expensive location for employers to locate and operate. The CPP ceiling has increased to $7,508.90 from $6,999.60, an increase of 7.3%. The CPP ceiling has increased by $2,011.10 over COVID since 2019. This increase equates to $1 an hour for a full-time employee. This makes Canada a much more expensive location for any employer to locate or operate. This does not encourage investment. As far as reserve funds, the province is holding approximately $1 billion, and then looking to hold $4 billion. These funds should not be held by the province. These reserves are inappropriate. Page 16, the $5.4 billion to help colleges and universities, I do not support this. Colleges and universities should be ensuring appropriate levels of student residence spaces for the international students that they invite to Ontario are housed. This is creating a housing deficit within the true market. This excludes, from my opinion on this, excludes the indigenous institutes which are supported. Colleges, so Constoga College, which operates in my region, Waterloo region, they have five locations. They have a residence with 520 beds, and they have close to 19,000 international students. I don't think this is appropriate. The colleges shouldn't be on the receiving ends of any tax dollars. The colleges should be audited on their student housing quotas, what they have, and they should be prior to inviting more students to Ontario. I am very supportive of international students and all students in general, but we need appropriate housing. And then on page, also, reduce an administrative burden. The reduction administration shouldn't be for the administrators. This actually misses the point. It should be for the people that are being administered, and for the people that are paying these fees, and it should be relief for consumers, not for administrators. And then the Ontario Investment Tax Credit, 10% refundable corporate income tax credit for investments by Canadian-controlled private corporations. I don't support this. I don't believe in giving subsidies to new corporations coming here. There is a lot of subsidies already in place for this, and a 10% reduction, which is a subsidy by the taxpayer, I don't agree with this. Modernizing the capital markets and financial services on page 39, enhancing consumer protection requires transparency and accountability.
One minute.
NGOs are freely operated while consistently lobbying on government for profits, financial penalties, unappealable decisions, and to not pay taxes. Not-for-profit definitions have loosely embraced these private entities. And page 52, the province works to help build one and a half million homes. A bold plan requires a budget. The province must invest taxpayer money to help. The province has collected over $20 billion of first-level taxation on housing sales. Indigenous consultations should occur and be considered prior to the decisions being made. $15 billion should be downloaded to the 444 municipalities to support supportive, affordable housing. In addition, the municipalities should be made whole, as was promised by the government regarding the negative financial impacts of Bill 23 on municipal financial affairs. This has left a very big hole in our infrastructure on municipalities. The Province of Ontario downloaded housing responsibilities to the municipalities in the mid-'90s.
Thank you very much. That concludes the time for this presentation. We now will go to Earth Education League Ontario Chapter. This is virtual, so welcome, and the floor is yours.
Hello. Can you hear me? Thank you. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Hello, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to present to committee today. My name is Jody Koberinsky. I'm a PhD candidate and a Shirk Fellow at the University of Waterloo currently. Today, I'm speaking, though, on behalf of the Earth Education League, a not-for-profit organization of which I sit on the board, and I want to discuss the impacts of Bill 85 on public education. Just briefly, the Earth Education League is a dynamic organization that increases capacity to deliver ecology, sorry, I'm a bit nervous, to deliver ecology-based higher learning, and focuses on the following three activities: developing ecology-based curriculum, land-based projects and trainings, and speaker and performer development. Our work depends on a very strong and well-supported public school system, and we have deep concerns about the directions that this bill is taking education in the province. The Minister of Education has said of this bill that the goal here today is to send a signal to school boards to refocus their energies on what matters most, which is improving reading, writing, and math skills and STEM. Many of us in the province share the OSSTF president Karen Littlewood's question about that. What are we supposed to be leaving out here if our focus is now supposed to be only on STEM? I'm afraid that those of us paying attention to the targeted attacks on our school boards across the province have answers to that implication, and we may well be asking, who is supposed to be left out here, as much as what? I am afraid that those, sorry, it would seem that the Elementary Teachers Federation of Ontario is correct when they suggest the government is creating a crisis in public education where none currently exists. We are puzzled by such rhetoric as back-to-basics and the need for overhauls, given the government's own materials state that Ontario is among the top-performing education systems nationally and internationally, and that's backed by data. So why is an overhaul necessary? A refocusing of the education system should not include government overreach. As I understand it, Bill 85 includes funding for school boards for the next academic year at a mere 2.7% increase. 2.7% is significantly below the rate of inflation and won't meet the students' needs. Critics have indicated that when accounting tricks are set aside, we are seeing a decrease in per-student funding of nearly $1,000 as a result of this budget. We need to invest in classrooms, in educators, in adults in the room, not on online routing, not on TVO and D2L, not on privatization through backdoors. A teacher colleague of mine, Derek Chika, went through the Act that is being proposed, and in it, the words literacy, math, and reading appear each one time, while the words power, sale, lease, property each appear between 11 and 21 times. So where are the basics in this Act? What is the priority of the government under this bill? There is a lot in this bill pertaining to school property and what could correctly be characterized as a property grab and a power grab. Communities own the lands at this time. Those school properties are school board properties, and this bill seeks to shift who owns those properties and who has a say in how they are utilized. And at a time when we are finally beginning to embrace the kind of education that our organization supports, and we're seeing increasing use of school yards for gardens, the notion that the province can come along and determine how school boards are going to use their lands is really out of touch with the direction that education is moving. Just this week alone, at the Waterloo Regional District School Board, we got to hear a round of announcements of $500 grants being given to school groups for their edible classroom projects, outdoor education efforts through gardening, expansion of food forests on school properties, and other food security and ecologically focused initiatives. This bill moves us in the wrong direction for what we need to go for education. Given that I have a little bit of time left, I would like to address a point that I brought up earlier in the presentation when I asked, who or what is it that this government intends to leave out in an Act focusing on improving reading, writing, and math skills, and no longer spending attention on things that don't matter? Our school boards right now in Ontario are the target of a well-organized, well-funded, disinformation campaign to make it out as if schools are a place where students are being groomed, using their words, not mine, because we have GSAs, and we follow the Ontario Human Rights Code when it comes to 2SLGBTQ+ students and staff. These attacks on queer students are escalating, and the not very veiled language that is present in the way the government is talking about this Act, this intention to undermine the power of school boards and place greater control over local education in the hands of the provincial government, is just unacceptable to anyone who's paying attention to education. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the three panels. So we now will start the questions, and we will start with the government. MPP and N.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks. First of all, thank you to the presenters for coming. Nina, welcome back again. Nice to see you again. And Kyle, we did met earlier also, yes. So thank you again for coming. In my writing on Mrs. Saga Malton, we have a Mrs. Saga Long-Term Care, where we actually have Butterfly Village. Dr. Saha, we're proud of the work he has done in the field. And I just want to, before I say that, on record, I want to say I am a big fan of Alzheimer's Society of Ontario. Time and time again, I've said that in the past, along with the blood donation, diabetes and organ donation, these are some of the places I would like to give my time and value the work you guys are doing. Question to you is, in terms of that Butterfly Village, what is your opinion about that, and is there something that we can do to expand that or work to support the communities?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you, MPP and N, for your ongoing support. Pleased to have had the chance to train your constituency office staff in dementia-friendly engagement as well. We fully support the butterfly model. It's really the gold standard of long-term care that's currently available in Ontario. It's person-focused. It really meets residents where they are, but it's highly staff-intensive. So the main barrier would be making sure we can actually get the staff and resources to roll that out to other homes in the province. And at a high level, the only two options you have are hire more staff, or keep people who are in long-term care but don't need to be there at home. In our opinion, keeping people out of long-term care is much cheaper and easier to do than, you know, finding 50,000, 60,000 additional PSWs. So that would be a good place to start.
And do you have a labor shortage as well? I mean, this is something which we hear across the globe. Everyone we talk about, and I actually had something where I was talking about this morning, believe this or not, we actually have a labor shortage in my office. So we hire somebody, and then we train them. By this time, the person is trained, ministries take it from us.
And that's, we'd have the same issue, but with hospitals. So we often find that our PSWs, our PNS, can make 30% to 40% more working out of a public hospital for the exact same role. Part of that has been the wage freeze over the past couple of years, but even before that, there was a disparity between home and community care and long-term care in hospitals. So same role, but drastically different pay. So we do have a labor shortage, for sure.
Thank you. And before I say that, I just want to put it on record, Chair, I love when somebody from my office has been taken by the ministry. I call it a progression in life. I don't feel bad. I just feel bad I have to train another person, but I feel good that I have the ability to train. Have you heard about Skill Development Fund?
And I think that might just be your skill as a boss, MPP and N, about why they're taking them up to the ministry, but we are familiar with that fund, yes.
Quickly, on the same, I want to ask you, do you see the labor shortage, and what is your suggestion, how we can solve the labor shortage problem in this province?
The labor shortage is going to continue because the environment doesn't exist for the youth to remain. I'm the mother of two teenagers, and it's quite devastating to me to hear them plan to leave. My children don't plan on staying in Ontario. They are 15 and 17, and they're not staying here. They both plan on leaving as soon as they can. So from the perspective of what is happening, we are actually, we are paying people to leave, and we're, the environment is not, we're aborting our youth. So I would like to make it more, I would like to keep our children here. I'd like them to come visit me. I don't want to leave Ontario, and it's really creating a, it's very sad. It's a very sad situation in Ontario right now. The environment is not of prosperity. They don't see hope for them here, and they're going where they are seeing hope. And I'm listening to other provinces market my children and my clients' children, and it's why I'm here. Like, I don't want, I don't want to lose our next generation. I want them to stay, and I'd like more people to come, but I'd like them to stay.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that. That's it from you, Chair.
MPP Smith.
Thank you for our presence, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, presenters, for being here. My question is to Nina. Nina, obviously, you have a concern about the direction of this government. In terms of Highway 413 and other things, you seem to have certain things that you want to see and certain things you don't want to see. Could you elaborate to me why you feel that the 413 should not be built?
I really just want to grow responsibly. Like, I just see that we have assets that we're not using. So from the perspective of using what we already have, there's already alternatives, and it's a very expensive, like, the plan that we have there, it's $10 billion per year for 10 years. That's a lot of money, and quite honestly, we need it in housing. Like, we just need that money for housing. People need to live somewhere first. We need the workers to build those highways. We need the workers to, it's just premature. It's not that I'm totally against it. It's premature. I'm not for that right now. I'm all about certain, like, the widening, and the certain things I'm very supportive of.
So is there any facts finding around why you are suggesting not there road in the 407, because, as you know, that's a private road?
Oh, yes.
So how are we going to just jump up and say we take the 407? People pay on that road, and I can tell you.
Yes.
For the times I've gone on that road, some of these trips are $50.
That's a problem. So that's private equity. That's a pension fund that's controlling major tract of land in Ontario. The majority owner of the 407 is CPP Investments.
But we realizing that's a corporation, and we cannot go and interfere with corporations and say, hey, somebody got to pay for that, right?
That's true.
So that's the reason we are having urban sprawls, where people have to get into the city to come to work and do all those kinds of things. So how do we do it? We got to build roads for people, right?
I think the way to do it is not to give up public lands to private corporations.
Okay. It's sad to say, it's sad to say that, I agree, and it's sad to hear that your children want to move from here, but over the next 10 years, by 2031, there'd be 2 million additional people living here in the province of Ontario. How are we planning to deal with that?
Well, we need budget. We need money to build houses. So without money, we definitely won't build anything. Like, to ask everyone else to come and make their commitments, the municipalities, the commitments they're making, they can't follow through with because the infrastructure is not going to be there. We're just putting things out of order. We're not developing in the order that we should be. It's much more expensive to develop the way that we're trying to develop. Developing by brute force is, it will definitely get things done, but it is, you're going to roll over a lot of, there's a lot of destruction in the way. We're destroying a lot of important things in the way.
So quickly, before the seconds run out here, one other part I'd like to speak about is about housing. Every single-
Thank you very much. That's the end of the time. We will now go to official opposition. MPP Fife.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair, and thanks to all, uh, the delegations, uh, Jody, Nina, and Kyle. Really appreciate you taking the time. There wasn't a lot of time allotted to actually register, so I appreciate you being here. Kyle, I'm going to start with you because, as you know, I'm doing a lot of work with the Alzheimer's Society of Waterloo Region. And things are pretty dire out there for folks. Um, and it's, it's not on the local Alzheimer's society's fault. It's the fact that they don't have the resources to meet the need, even though they've come up with very creative ways to try and help folks. Uh, in your presentation, you mentioned that in the 2022 budget, the government had promised the $5 million, but that money did not get to communities. I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about what the impact of that was on local Alzheimer's societies. And then I also just wanted you to address, you know, the need for transparency in where the money is going. Because if the government is presenting a budget, but the funding that's promised in that budget doesn't get out the door, what is the value of that budget? And that's the transparency piece that quite honestly is causing a lot of concern around the province for many organizations. So please just focus on the $5 million if you would.
Thank you, MPP Fife, and thank you for your ongoing advocacy and your petition. We were glad to see, uh, MPP Jellinoff introduce some more, uh, signatures in the House last week as well. So please hit that star around. In terms of the $5 million, that would be the difference between somebody getting four visits a year from a healthcare member versus two. Um, so right now, some of our staff, the best practice is to have quarterly check-ins with a personal living with dementia. We try to help as many people as we can, and without additional funding, we've had to cut back on intensity of service. So we might, there might be six months between, um, check-ins for, for, uh, healthcare members and people living with dementia. So this funding could potentially allow people to get higher intensity of care. And also, as I mentioned in the presentation, um, we already have this proposal ready to go where it would enable us to support about, uh, 6,900 additional clients, um, across the province. So that's a not insignificant number of people who would be getting care that has been shown to keep them out of hospital and keep them out of long-term care.
Yeah. And, and so I, I, you know, when we introduce amendments to this budget, because we have to try to make this budget a better budget, we're not allowed to introduce motions that would add funding. But we're going to try to introduce an amendment that actually would get the government to do what they're saying they should be doing, right? That they've promised. And so really hope that that money gets out the door, uh, to folks across the province. Uh, Alzheimer's and dementia is, is one of the cruelest diseases. It's affected my family. I think that all of us have examples of, of this in our, in our communities and in our families. And you make a very strong point that when you do early intervention, when there is an early diagnosis, then that help can actually keep people from needing additional resources at the hospital level. Uh, in your presentation that you made, I believe it was in Ottawa, right? Ottawa, Sudbury, sorry, Sudbury. You, you pointed out that if we don't, if we continue on this path of just the lip service on addressing Alzheimer's and dementia, that every hospital in the province of Ontario will be filled with dementia patients. And already we're seeing, you know, huge strain on that system. So can you just talk about the, the, the fiscally prudent, um, concept of investing early so that we don't pay later?
Yeah. It, it really is difficult to overstate the scale of dementia in our hospitals right now. Um, if you go into any emergency department of any hospital, most of the individuals who are waiting 12-plus hours to be admitted are individuals living with dementia because they do not have an acute care reason for being there. They're simply not being supported. Their caregiver is past her breaking point, and it usually is her. They're not getting support at home and they have no choice. We, we're actually aware of multiple regions of the province where care coordinator staff are advising their patients to call 911, demanded ambulance, and refuse to take their loved one back as the only avenue to get support.
Yeah, this is, uh, this has actually happened in Waterloo region on several occasions. So I, I wanted to thank you for once again coming here. Uh, we'll try to get the government to listen on this issue. It defies all logic that the money did not flow in 2021, '22, and, but we'll try to get them to do it in 2023. Um, Jody, I just, I can't see you anymore, but are you still there? Yeah?
Yes, I am.
Thank you so much for coming to committee today. I can't tell you how it's encouraging for us to hear that people really do, do see past this latest, um, education bill, this legislation. I, you make some very strong points, which I'm in agreement with, uh, which we're in agreement with. Um, I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about, I mean, your, your language was very strong. That you said that this is a targeted attack on education.
It is.
And so I, I really do need you to sort of unpack that a little bit, please, for us.
Yes.
So that all members of the committee hear the same message.
Thanks for the opportunity. Um, and I really appreciate your leadership in, uh, in our community. Um, I've been a delegate to the Waterloo Region District School Board on a minimum of three occasions in the last two years, pushing back against attempted book bans, um, on attacks on our educators, calling them pedos and groomers, um, on trustees on the side of the far right, uh, people who ran for trustees with no interest in education at all but to tear it down, who continue to bog down our truly, the one truly democratic institution we have, which is the school board, and bogging down our school board meetings with anti-trans, um, anti-critical race theory, uh, like, anything that they call quote-unquote woke. Um, and where this is coming from is the Leadership Institute in the United States, who since 1979 has funded over 235,000 Republicans in far-right organizing techniques, including an entire workshop that some Ontario School Board trustee candidate members attended last summer, that is a workshop for taking over your school board and instituting culture war-type, um, policies. And we see this in the Don't Stay Gay bill in Florida, and that's the same attacks that are coming here.
I totally recognize the direction that you're going in. And we saw that last night at the York District School Board.
We did.
With an attack, really.
Yes.
I mean, I've, I'd never thought, I, I'm the past president of the Ontario Public School Boards and a former trustee. I've never seen anything like this. One last statement, when children do not feel safe in an education setting, can those children learn appropriately?
And we know from all of the research on this matter that that's an affirmative no, they cannot. That the, the, all of this effort that we're doing is not instead of the basics, but it's in order to ensure that all students have access to the basics, which our schools in Ontario have for two decades now been amongst the best in the world.
Thank you so much, Jody.
MPP Kenapath.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kyle. You know, coming to the, to the, today's meeting and doing the presentation. And my question to Kyle, Kyle, you made a good presentation about Alzheimer's and dementia. It's a very horrific disease, uh, in orderly in Ontario, Canada, and the world. And we don't have any, any treatment for that, you know? There's, even as a medical world trying to figure out what would be the course for the dementia, same, like, same as, um, Alzheimer and other autism and all sort of mental health issue. So you made a good point. I'll give you more time to elaborate some of the numbers. We are numbers. We are in the finance committee. And how many people are, are affected by the dementia and Alzheimer in, in Ontario? And how many people are in the hospital, streamlined hospital bed? I, I'll give you more time to elaborate on. You, you brought the good numbers. We are numbers people.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
And also, my mother is, was in dementia. She, she was bedridden for three years, uh, in the com care. I'm coming back to the why we are investing billion dollar on com care. I'm coming back to that point. But I want you to elaborate about the numbers.
Sure. Definitely. We're, we're numbers people as well, so glad to hear that. So there are about 275,000 people in Ontario who live with dementia. Um, 275,000 today. That will triple to about 776,000, uh, by 2050. Um, and I should clarify that dementia is an umbrella term. Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia. Other types, vascular Lewy body, uh, they're all grouped under that dementia diagnosis. Um, in terms of, because this is the finance committee, it costs Ontario between 30 and 35 billion dollars per year, um, in direct care costs. So that's hospital, home care, long-term care. That's not included in out-of-pocket expenses. So caregivers across Canada, they spend about $11 billion a year, uh, on their caregiving responsibilities. So you figure Ontario is about 40% of Canada. That's $4 to $5 billion that everyday people are spending to take care of their husband, their wife, et cetera. And there are about 150,000 unpaid family caregivers supporting people living with dementia today. In terms of hospital capacity, about 9% of our beds in Ontario are occupied by someone living with dementia. That's only ALC beds. So there are additional, uh, beds that are occupied by people with dementia who are not ALC status. So it's, it's over a tenth of our hospital capacity is dementia.
You mentioned over 3,000 bed occupied by dementia patients, is that right?
That's correct.
Across, across Ontario?
Across Ontario, yes.
So that's the reason we, you know, we want to alleviate the hospital pressure. You know, the, it's, hospitals are getting more and more pressure from, uh, non-emergency patients going to the emergency department, same as a bed. So that's why our, this year budget include 1 billion. It's not, it started with B. Uh, over the three years to get more people connected care in the comfort of their own home through the home and community care. We advocate, the first term we got elected, I advocated, my colleagues are here, Stephen and Rudy and David and others, we advocated because the democracy moving in, in our areas in GTA, a lot of seniors. In my riding, Mark and Tom, every homes almost have a senior, senior because of the democracy in, we represent most ethnically diverse riding. That's why we advocate for billion dollar to com care. My mother was in the com, com care. That's, we didn't dump it in the institution, the warehouse. So that's why the home care is a very important, first time in the history in the Ontario government is invested 1 billion. Could you, what do you, what do you, your take on, what in, what else, what should we continue to prioritize to support the dementia care workforce, dementia patient, increase the capacity for family-managed com care? I want you to get your take on that.
Yeah, certainly. So home care is definitely part of, part of the solution. Um, something we hear from clients is, is sometimes they will be allocated home care hours and not actually receive them. Sometimes a home care staff person will go to their home. When they're supposed to be there for two hours, will leave after 30 minutes. Sometimes visits were missed. So certainly that billion dollars, and I'm, I'm sure you're personally familiar with, with the stresses of actually getting the care you're entitled to, um, in, in home care. So we support that billion-dollar investment. Important also the stress that community care and community support services tends to be lumped in with our bigger brother, home care. Uh, but community support services are distinct as well. Um, and that's the sort of services that the Alzheimer's Society provides. So things like recreational therapy, um, adult day programs, those sort of group, um, programs in home respite care as well, less intensive. What we're finding is because hospitals and long-term care homes are so overburdened, people can't get into long-term care, they can't get into hospital, so they're coming to us instead. So we're caring for people who have a much higher acuity of need, um, compared to what we should be caring for who are people who are at early to mid-stage dementia. As one example, for our adult day programs, we tend to target between four to six to one staff to client, sorry, client to staff ratio. So for every cla, every staff person, we'd have four to six clients roughly. In some regions, that's now down to two to one because these are individuals who need help with bathing. They need help with feeding. They need help with these activities of day-to-day living. They might not get a shower except for the one time a week they come to us. That's not traditionally the sort of client we support. But because they can't get into long-term care, we don't turn them away. They're coming to us. But that means the person who is, you know, 70, has mid-stage Alzheimer's disease, they might not be able to get the support either because this is other person who can't move up, uh, the chain of healthcare services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to pass on to, to MPP and N.
1.2.
1.2.
MPP Smith.
Yeah, this question is for Jody. Is she still on? Okay. Um, Jody, in the past, uh, in a post, post last year, you shared a quote that say Doug Ford has decimated EV production in Ontario. He hurt communities like Oshawa and Windsor despite any gains. But in the budget, it mentioned how the government has acted over, sorry, uh, the government has attracted over $16 billion investment by the global automakers and suppliers in the EV battery. Do you still feel that way today?
Um, I'm here to speak to you about education. If you had an education question for me, I'd answer it. But I'll just say that this government is taking credit for work that the federal government has done, making those arrangements happen. And I'd happily debate you on that issue if I came prepared to talk about it. And I feel like this line of questioning is quite interesting. You could find many things I had to say about education online, and yet here you choose to pull out some tweet that I made that I don't have, uh, the effort. Is this how you run, uh, conduct business? It's pretty, uh, it's pretty outrageous. And I'm, I'm actually not going to answer for them. I'm done with you, sir. I am done.
MPP Smith will come to order and this presentation is over. Thank you very much. Um, thank, I, I want to thank, um, all three panels. Oh, no, we have one more to go here. We're going to go to the official opposition. MPP begin.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, uh, thank you to all of you. This, uh, honestly, I'm, I'm so grateful to have all of you here today because, because your presentations add such value and add so much more to the depth that's necessary when it comes to how this government prioritizes where the money goes. Because that's really what the issue is here. Um, and, um, and I'm also a little disappointed that we're using government staff to do oppo research on the delegates here as well. So, but Jody, uh, well done, and I'm just remarkably impressed by, um, by the work that you all do standing up for public services and public education. Um, so I, I want to start off with, uh, with the Alzheimer's Society, Kyle. And I, I hope I, I can get through all of them because I just have so many things to ask about. Um, Kyle, you talked about MRI, you talked about preventative measures and treatments that are available. Um, and, and so I won't even spend time just, you know, elaborating on the question. If you would elaborate on the impact that it would have right now to fund those and what it means to be fiscally responsible by funding those now so that we're not suffering later on.
Yeah. So about 40% of cases of dementia are not necessarily preventable, but they're modifiable. So we like to say what's good for the heart is good for the brain. So, uh, alcohol misuse, obesity, smoking, um, all of those risk factors that lead to heart conditions also contribute to dementia. A lot of people don't know that. So we need to be talking to people in their twenties, their thirties, their forties. What you do today could potentially impact whether or not you develop Alzheimer's disease in 50 years. There is a negative stigma around the disease that if you get dementia, it's something either you did or something that is outside of your control. So people feel, well, why bother? But there is actually modifiable risk factors. In terms of the financial argument, so we released, uh, data last year, at the end of last year, showing that if we could delay the onset of symptoms of Alzheimer's disease by five years, we would actually reduce by a third the number of people who get Alzheimer's disease. The blunt reality behind that is in those five years, a third of people would pass away before developing Alzheimer's disease. But this speaks to the importance of both risk factors and of getting a future treatment into the hands of people who need it. Because that would mean instead of having 770,000 people living with dementia, we'd be closer to half a million. We can't handle half a million, but it's a heck of a lot better than three-quarters of a million.
100%. Um, and, and just quickly, um, you know, there's another threat that we're facing right now, which is the privatization of our healthcare system. And the fact that a lot of people are waiting for an MRI, for example, and the risk that that causes because when you don't get a diagnosis, um, and, you know, what, the sort of the, the spiraling effect of that is also very damaging. So if you want to share anything about that.
Definitely. So i- in terms of how it works today, most people living with Alzheimer's disease don't actually have a diagnosis. They have a probable diagnosis. They've been told, you most likely have Alzheimer's disease. That's good enough for people today, but when we're getting to the future where there will be actual drug treatments, we cannot either in a fiscally or ethically responsible way give somebody an expensive treatment with potential side effects if we don't know 99.99% sure that they have Alzheimer's disease. All of the treatments currently approved used in the United States, they must be administered at the early Alzheimer's disease and/or the mild cognitive impairment stage. That's about usually either before you present symptoms or right when you start presenting symptoms. Today, most people don't get diagnosed until the mid to late stages. So we need to do a much better job of catching, diagnosing, and detecting Alzheimer's disease much earlier. For example, by implementing memory assessment, cognitive assessments as part of your routine checkup. Funding, and not even us. So that would go to primary care doctors being told that you can do these checkups at, at age 60 to catch people early so they can get this treatment and not develop Alzheimer's disease, not become a long-term care resident, not become an ALC patient in hospital.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kyle. Really appreciate it. Nina, I want to come to you now. Um, you touched on, I, I feel like you went through the entire bill and did a lot of homework on every single schedule of it. So thank you very, very much. Um, I really appreciated your comments about the Ontario place and, and I appreciate, you know, the sort of the, the reflection on the me, what would, what we're facing right now when it comes to the- comes to the four oh seven and the fact that that was, you know, leased for all these years. And right now we're seeing sort of a replica of that with Ontario Place and the lease of ninety five years and it's public land, just like the, the four oh seven, which was built by using tax dollars. And now we have to pay to get on it. It's extremely expensive and here we are with the really congested four oh one. And, and I think that comparison, it really highlights what we're facing with the threat of this giant ninety five year old, ninety five year lease for, for Ontario Place. I, I would love to hear, you know, I, I hope you can elaborate a little bit in terms of what it means to really respect tax dollars, like people's hard earned money. And as a mother, I think it really matters to you in terms of the public services and how do we retain what we have?
What I'm seeing, like I'm seeing public assets being moved to pension funds, private equity, the, what we're seeing in healthcare, we've already, this has already happened in America and the private equity behind that was Blackstone Private Equity operating under, I think it was called Health Inc. or something like that, but it was Blackstone that was behind the hospital and healthcare privatization in America and it made things more expensive. As far as pension funds go, we have the Ontario, we have the Teachers Pension Fund that owns one of the mortgage default companies in Canada. We have the CPP Investments that owns the four oh seven. And we have also Omer's that owns the Ontario Land Registry System. This has all happened during my career, so I've watched all this very carefully. These are all real estate assets and these are all things that have been turned into billionaire corporations, but they were all originally public assets. So Ontario Place to me is following in the same line. Do you want your time back? If I start, okay. I, I see that as following in the same line. So this is the privatization of public spaces and this should remain in the public's, on the public's books, not to be sold off, not to be a spa. I drove by Ontario Place this morning purposely. I came down Lake Shore and it was beautiful. There were so many people there just to enjoy it.
Yeah, and, and you know, one of the, I think the difficult part of it is that people want answers. They want to know what the numbers look like, what the contract looks like, and this government has been really behind closed doors with a lot of these details and people want to know exactly what's going on with their land, with their money. And the government and the minister should be very open and transparent about it and that's missing right now. I, I wish I had more time because I want to go to Jody and I also wanted to ask Nina about, you know, you talked about the healthcare staffing crisis and.
Very much, that is, that's the time. It's used up and we do want to thank all three of the panel members for your participation and the time you took to prepare to be here. Thank you very much.